Mr. Proman, you win on the background.
Need to keep it changing daily. It's my new office.
That's a really good background.
I don't know.
It's virtual.
Cassidy is also winning.
Beat me on that one.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Oh, my goodness.
This is Cassidy.
That is my tree.
Oh, my goodness. That is beautiful.
Thank you.
I have a Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
Oh, no, we don't mess around. We got a lot of trees in this house. We do not mess around. This is the main one, though. It happens to be in my office. It's just the front of my house.
Nice, nice.
It's all good.
I'll take your candy canes after the holiday if you don't want. Collect for next year.
Okay, so do you want to eat all these or what?
I'll eat them all, especially they came out with the Oreo candy canes, the best candy canes ever.
Really?
Yeah, very good. And if you go to Walgreens on December 26th, they're like 75% off.
Oh, heck, yeah. I'd have to look for those Oreo candy canes.
May I interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
Mrs. Cracky, are you able to hear us?
I hear you, yes, but I'm not sure I can get into you. I'm going to the beginning of the meeting and it just with my finger because my other device thing will not work. That's the weirdest thing. That happens sometimes in our meetings down there, too, and I'm wondering if that's the gadget on the right that we should be touching. So I've got show everything and here I am ready to go. I hate that my mouse isn't working.
Colleagues, also, there's popcorn in the board office for you, so please should stop by and grab it. And I think the tack building will be open over break with security, right?
I think the emails gave a time.
Perfect, okay. I remember something on that.
Yeah.
And when Matt is ready, we can start the meeting.
I think I'm as ready as I'm going to be, so I'm going to turn my camera and we'll see what happens.
Let's go. All righty, let's begin. All right, right, Matt?
Yes, we're good.
Pursuant to Section 841411 in Nebraska statutes, an executive order 2036, which was issued on November 25th, 2020, the next regular meeting of Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, January 4th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office on public inspection on the district website, www OPS.org. Pursuant to Section 841412 in Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, along with a copy of the executive order 2036, are available as an attachment to the agenda for this meeting. The agenda and attachments may be found at district OPS.org. In keeping with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act and Executive Order 2036, this meeting is considered to be a meeting held by video conference. Meetings held by video conference require that participants at each location be able to hear and see each meeting participant. Board members are participants throughout the entire meeting regardless of whether they are speaking at a particular time. As such, please keep your camera on throughout the entire board meeting. Staff members who are called on to participate during the meeting are expected to turn their cameras on when interacting with the board. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
One moment on the pledge. Give me a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I goofed it up. Moving on to our next thing, Dr. Holman, our vice president, will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
First, our vision, every student, every day, prepare for success. And our mission, to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipes. Snow.
Here.
Aiden, present.
Thank you. Ms. Snipe let us know that she couldn't attend tonight's meeting. I will entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Snipes from tonight's meeting. There's a motion by Ms. Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cassidy. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, starting off with our Treasurer's Report, Mr. Scott Roberts.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Snow, Vice President Holman, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Logan. The financial statements for the periods ended September 30th and October 31st, 2020, have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. Moving on to Superintendent Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Snow, Members of the Board of Education. I'd like to start tonight by thanking Manuela, a Saddle Brook Elementary School student, for designing the superintendent's holiday card this year. Her intricate illustration, which hopefully you can see, features a winter scene that warms the heart and reflects our collective oneness on planet Earth. It is a magnificent representation of the holiday season. I'd also like to thank her teacher, Ms. Brittany Simon. Congratulations are in order for Principal Toni Gotter of Kennedy Elementary for being named the AIM Institute's Technology Educator of the Year. Bryan High Order Students Journalists, they were awarded the Cornhusker Award for Excellence in High School Journalism from the Nebraska High School Press Association. Zoe Johnson, a King Elementary student who earned the Citizen Life Saving Award from the Omaha Fire Department. While swimming in a local pool, Zoe discovered a three-year-old face down in the water. She quickly sprang into action and courageously pulled the child from the pool. Zoe's heroic actions saved the child from drowning. Zoe, you are amazing and you certainly make us OPS proud. We're going to try to have Zoe here at a future meeting. That is a remarkable accomplishment for anyone and especially for a child. We're super, super proud of you and it's just an amazing, amazing accomplishment and shows who you are as a person, Zoe, so thank you. The Alice Buffett Outstanding Teacher Award is accepting nominations until January 15th, 2021. The award was created more than 30 years ago to recognize teachers who have gone above and beyond to help their students achieve in the classroom and in life. If you know a teacher who deserves recognition, please spend some time during your winter break submitting a nomination for this amazing award. As we end our first semester, to our students, staff, and family, we did make it through and we did it together. We know it will be a long, worthwhile, and critically important road toward academic recovery once we begin a new state of normalcy. Our leadership team is engaged in ongoing discussions about our short and long-term plan. Students remain at the core of our decision-making. We will share more information, both plans with our families in the master room. When we launched our strategic plan of action in January, little did we know it would serve as a bedwark in keeping our spaces grounded and focused in the midst of unparalleled circumstances. Though the pandemic has required numerous abrupt transitions, our shared mission, vision, and norms have served as our north star, helping us stay the course. As we welcome a new calendar year, our resolve and determination remain strong on our shared values, equity, results, leadership, accountability, and most importantly, joy. Our staff and families demonstrate them daily, offering students our best even in challenging times. As a reminder, we continue to offer our Meals to Go program throughout winter break and into second semester. We have 20 sites that will be, they started today, twice a week, and they will be next week, this week, next week, and the week after, and then the following week, classes return to our regular Meals to Go. After the winter break, when we begin second semester with a phased return to in-person learning, students will return to school remotely on January 5th, using their district-provided devices from home. Staff will teach from their classroom. All students return in person on January 19th, 2021, and we continue to use our family 3-2 attendance calendar. The remote learning program will remain an option for students who wish to continue learning full-time from home during the second semester. Family, please contact your schools, your student's school, if you'd like to change your student's attendance plan for the second semester. As we conclude tonight, as I conclude my remarks tonight, we would like to extend our sincere, deep and sincere gratitude to our departing members, Ms. Gadding, Mr. Pearlman, and Ms. Ryan, for their years of service and dedication to the Omaha Public Schools. Your personal sacrifice, relentless drive, and countless hours of commitment for our students and their families are to be recognized and commended. We thank you for your service and we wish all three of you the best in your future endeavors. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you, President Snow, Vice President Holman, and Members of the Board of Education.
Thank you so much, Dr. Logan. We're going to start with Board Member comments. And I'll start off by going first and then I'll go to Ms. Cracky. Does anybody else want to give a comment? Just raise your hand. Okay, well, first, Dr. Holman, okay. Well, first, I want to start off by just thanking everybody for tonight's meeting, but also to thank our three board members that are moving on. And I want to start with Ms. Ryan, who's a personal friend of mine. First, congratulations on your new adventures. And then, second, thank you so much for bringing the discussion of equity to this board and challenging your peers to think outside the box and being an advocate for our teachers and our community at all times. So, thank you so much and best wishes. And, you know, I know you won't miss your Mondays, but we'll miss you. Mr. Pearlman, thank you so much for your service as a parent, the guidance that you've been able to provide the board as well as the district in your profession, and also with the bond that we worked on. And to be honest with you, Mr. Pearlman, I would not be in this chair today if it wasn't for you. So, thank you so much and best adventures with you and your family as you start the next year off. To Mrs. Gadding, thank you so much for setting the trend and the role of the board president and raising that bar up to a level that hasn't been raised since, I mean, set the new standard for the district. Thank you so much for your work you've been putting in on OSERS and letting the entire district know what we should do to be more active and Lincoln. That was all led because of you. So, thank you so much and best adventures to you in the future and also for your parent perspective and good luck to your boys there. Well, this is it, folks. As your board president, I'm excited to not be board president anymore, but I'm also excited to see the new leadership on the board. And I'm excited for what this district is going to be doing in 2021, naming five new schools, looking at our facilities again, the strategic plan of action, I had it right, Dr. Logan, the strategic plan of action, and making sure that our kids have an opportunity to grow over the next couple of years so they can get back on track so we can still be the stellar school district in the Midwest. So with that, as board president, thank you so much for allowing me to serve you all. Moving on to other board members, Mrs. Cracky, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me, Mark? Okay, you can hear me? Yes.
Yes.
I, because I was not able to attend the previous board meeting, I was unable to vote on the issue regarding the future of Yates. While $100,000 was offered and accepted, today I have the opportunity to acknowledge my negative vote on the item. And I want to have that recorded in the record and I want that to be reflected. With the exception of one individual, taxpayers in my sub-district were very much opposed to accepting the $100,000 bid over the $630,000 offered to us. While we do not always get what we want, believe me that with my many years and history on the board, the many times my area waited and waited for upgrading, et cetera, to occur. This was especially problematic. Again, this was a very difficult issue that seemed to consume every meeting this year. Now, as we move forward, our focus needs to be on how and what we must do to help acknowledge and raise our academic productivity. With COVID, everyone's job has been challenging. Teachers have been stressed like never before. Hopefully, we will move forward and center our efforts on discussions of academics and our many challenging issues in OPS. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Cracky, for your comments. Any other colleagues would like to speak? Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Snow. I also would like to just thank the Al Gore members for their dedication and service to the Omaha Public Schools. We will definitely miss your insights and wealth of knowledge and appreciate all of your contributions over the past several years. So, thank you very much and we wish you the best. And then I also would like to take a moment to recognize all of our teachers, staff, and administrators for your compassion, your love, your determination, your steadfastness and heroism in doing all that you have this first semester to reach and teach our students. As we know, it has not been ideal or easy for any of us, just kind of trying to maneuver through this first semester and trying to figure things out. So, I just wanted to recognize you all and thank you all so much for everything that you have done. I know it has been stressful for most of you all, but we certainly appreciate you and all of your efforts. So, thank you very much. And then I also wanted to send a special shout-out to my daughter's school, Fullerton Magnet. The principal, Mr. Buchholz, Ms. Lori, who was the secretary, for one, they did, you know, you never know what kids are going through. My daughter, if anybody knows her, she is a perfectionist and that is good and also has some negative aspects to it. But the other day, she was two minutes tardy to school and she basically had a conniption when she walked inside the building. And Ms. Lori, the secretary, called me to let me know that she basically broke down and they took care of her and got her calmed down and walked her back to school, or excuse me, walked her back to class and everything. And so I certainly appreciate those tiny things because they, although tiny, you know, it really matters and that meant a lot to Leila as well. And then I also wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. G, who is her teacher. He has done just such a tremendous job this semester and has gone above and beyond the call of duty and the expectations that are set before all the teachers, you know, outside of doing the morning meetings every morning. He also meets every day at 11:30 for reading for all of his students and then also at the end of the day for like a wrap-up for all the kids. And so I know that I appreciate him going above and beyond and I'm sure the other parents do as well because this is certainly not anything that is expected of any of our teachers to do, but definitely demonstrates his love for what he does and care for the students in his class. So, thank you all at Fullerton Magnet.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Our next speaker is Ms. Ryan.
I just wanted to, real quick, because I'm a crier, so I don't want to say too many things. But just thank you to all of my colleagues. I learned a tremendous amount from all of you. And probably the least expected friendship would be between me and Mrs. Cracky. So, I'm going to miss you so much every other Monday night and I hope we keep in touch.
Hope so, too.
And I think that the biggest lesson that I learned is just to listen because people will tell you exactly what they mean and what they want and who they are if you just listen. And so I hope I modeled that while I served and I just hope that I, you know, did a good job. So, thank you, everybody, and I'm really excited to see under Dr. Logan where this district continues to go and how this new board, what they will also do, and I hope to Jane Erdnberger, who will be replacing me. I'm always around if you have any questions and I know we're meeting soon. So, yeah, I'm excited for this next phase of my life as well. So, thank you, President Snow.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Our next speaker, Mr. Smith.
Thank you for recognizing me. I want to thank the board members who are cycling off. I really appreciate your leadership, hard work, and dedication. We've come such a long way as a board and I've learned a lot as well. I've grown a lot just as a colleague. And so, please continue to push forward and utilize us as a resource and I hope that we can call on you as resources as well as we continue to try to take our school district to the next level under the leadership of Dr. Logan. Also want to thank all of our educators who have worked really, really hard during this time. We understand what we put you through and we've been in the same ship together. So, thank you for all of your hard work and just steadfastness. And also want to thank those people who are on the front line, so our medical professionals and our union workers, those people who take care of the buildings, the engineers, the operations. Nothing happens if we don't have you there. So, I want to thank those people as well. And thank you, Mark, for your leadership as board president.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And our last speaker, anybody else have their hands raised? Okay, Mrs. Gadding, former board president, floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you to all of you for your comments and for your kind words as well and wish everyone the best. I have a bit to say. So, first of all, I want to say it's been an honor to serve the constituents of OPS Sub-District 5 for the past seven and a half years. First, I would like to thank God for allowing me the opportunity to give back to my community. Second, I would like to thank my family for their support. My husband, Mike, and our three boys, Ryan, John, and Grant, have graciously supported me while I have served. I recognize that they have sacrificed to allow me the opportunity to serve others. All three of our sons graduated from OPS during my time on the board and I'm very proud of that. Finally, I want to thank the thousands of constituents from Sub-District 5 who voted for me. Many of you volunteered during my initial campaign and have continued to provide me with valuable feedback regarding decisions I have been faced with as a board member. I've always considered my vote at the table your voice. So, you are the best. I've enjoyed the opportunity to support families and to meet so many individuals passionate about the education of our city's young people. I want to thank all the individuals across, from across the district who have reached out to me over the years, whether it be parents, teachers, administrators. I've truly appreciated your kind words of encouragement, your prayers, as I have worked on the board to make OPS better for our students and staff. I look back at my campaign promises and believe that I have consistently held true to the values I campaigned on. Those were, one, protecting taxpayers by ensuring effective use of funds; two, improving the transparency and accountability of the district; three, prioritizing student achievement; and four, improving school safety for our students. Future boards will face many of the same challenges that I saw seven and a half years ago. I believe there are immense challenges ahead for the district. I would encourage all those who will serve in the future to be very mindful of the responsibilities of high-quality boards, manage the superintendent appropriately, use the resources of the district wisely, and focus on the academic outcomes of our students. The future of Omaha depends on providing the 50,000 K-12 students we serve, as well as our pre-K students, a high-quality education filled with academic rigor. Thank you again to the amazing constituents of this district and especially Sub-District 5. I'm thankful for your input, your encouragement, and your support during my time on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadding. Check and see if we have any public comment. We do have public comment. So... So, um, the next agenda item is public comment. We have two speakers that are in the queue. The board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute, one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student, uh, or a staff member, um, instead of saying, mentioning her name, please say that, uh, give that to Mr. Ray and he will look into those details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit it in any written commentary, um, please send it to Mr. Ray at Matthew dot Ray at OPS dot org. Uh, his name again is, his email is Matthew dot Ray at OPS dot org. Once again, please don't forget to spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. And our first speaker
is Mr. Bobby Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Miller.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, President Snow, Vice President Holman, Dr. Logan, and members of the board. My name is Robert Miller, R O B E R T M I L L E R. I reside at seventy-three oh one North Hundred and Seventh Avenue in Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one two two. I am the proud president of the Omaha Education Association. First, I want to recognize the amount of work that all OPS staff has done over the last nine months. Each employee, whether it's the head engineer, custodial staff, bus driver, cafeteria staff, administration, paras, or teachers have played a significant role to get us to where we are, and that's to winter break. Thank you to everyone for their tireless dedication to our students. It hasn't been easy, but as a collective group, you all made it happen. Thank you to the parents and the students for being flexible as we navigated these uncharted waters. Teachers want nothing more than to have their students back in their classrooms. Our teachers have been surveyed many times throughout this pandemic. And I'm going to share with you the data that shows the tremendous increase in workload during the first semester. When educators were asked, I have enough planned time to prepare for my teaching workload, seventy-seven point eight percent said that this is not true. When asked, are you working more, less, or about the same as you did last year? Eighty-eight point ninety-one percent say that they are working more than they did before COVID. When asked, how many additional hours of work each week has been added to your typical workload due to COVID changes this year? Forty-three point zero one percent stated they are working an extra seven to fifteen hours per week just to keep up. The number one thing teacher asked in a survey for OEA was to address the insufficient amount of planned time with the increased workload. The Nebraska Department of Education has given the district the opportunity to give teachers time to address the workload concern. Districts are eligible to give teachers up to twelve hours per quarter to address this concern. The district did reduce the number of meetings at the elementary and secondary levels to give teachers adequate planning and preparation time. But that reduction only gave teachers, on the average, an additional forty minutes each month and some not at all. With the term ending, that option has expired. I hope the district continues to further limit the number of meetings and give staff adequate time to address the crushing workload and in turn serve their students even better. They also added a singular non-student day to the calendar, half of which is being used for building level meetings. We've had several discussions with the district regarding pacing guides. I've repeatedly requested that they be adjusted. Last week, the CIS released a plan that includes skipping some core skills at the lower grades, which is important to give students the opportunity for repetition on the skills. By skipping these modules, you limit the opportunity for students for that repetition. The skills are also embedded in the stories that are being read. This prompted a response from a teacher. And I quote, "Looking at the third quarter pacing guide for ELA, it is horrendous. I'm staring at it in disbelief and trying not to cry. This pacing is not in any way acceptable to the needs of my students. I don't know who developed this guide, but it's obvious just how disconnected they are from the classroom." This was just many of the comments that was received since last Wednesday. Teachers are planners. Knowing that the return to school in January will be virtual for weeks, they have organized their material accordingly so that the students had them before they left for winter break. Now they must start to up, start to toss things out and start over, causing frustration and additional work to be done over winter break. Some of you may recall the commercial that states, "Give it to Mikey, he'll eat anything." Well, that's what it feels like in the life of a teacher. Give it to teachers, they'll take it and make it work. That needs to stop. The workload needs to be addressed sooner rather than later, or you will lose staff. Enough is enough. What will this board do to address the workload for teachers? They are frustrated, stressed, and overwhelmed. What will you do? Thank you.
Mr. Snow, the next public comment is Ashley Walker.
Hello?
Mr. Snow, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. I'm unmuted myself. Um, sorry. Please begin your public comment. Please state your name, uh, spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment.
Uh, my name's Ashley Walker. It's W A L K E R. Um, I was just given the information about this meeting. The, uh, mine is addressing, and I don't even know if this is a right meeting. I was given this information last weekend, told to call in um, about you guys not making us bully in school. Um, I don't know if you guys have a special meaning for that or not, but basically my issue was the way you guys have put everything together is messy and it sounds like the teachers are having a lot of issues also. And it seems that this board is not addressing any of the concerns of parents, kids, or teachers. Um, and that's just from listening to Mr. Miller before me. Uh, but I had frustration with my child's last name is a W and you have disproportionately given in-school days plus, uh, turning items in to the end of the alphabet considered to the first, and that was the issue of why I called the tax building last week. Um, and the person who I spoke to told me I should voice the concerns because she was a parent also and has the same frustrations as me as a parent. Every other district in this community is going five days a week and they're able to handle it. I do understand there is a teacher shortage. There's also a nurse shortage.
Huh?
And it's able to happen.
I'm in a meeting.
Um, your district, OPS district by the Nebraska Department of Education, I looked it up, is at a needs improvement. We are the only one in this area on that needs improvement. And I understand our students are different compared to other students, but that is the reason they should be in person. They are already behind from your three-two schedule that is poorly planned. And now they're behind a semester. And if you do it all next semester, they're gonna be behind an entire year. So the kids are already behind being in OPS and now they're gonna be behind even worse because you're not listening or caring. So I just wanted to say that. Um, that was my frustration last week. The plan, the three-two plan was poorly put together. Uh, you making them go virtual in the beginning was poorly put together. The kids hadn't even had the iPads ever and you didn't teach them how to use them. You are seriously, even with, I looked up like UNL, fifty percent of students don't even attend remote learning. And you think that's okay in your district? Like, there are ways, these other five districts, Bennington, Elkhorn, they're all going in-person, even Bellevue, and they're finding a way around it and their students aren't falling as far behind as OPS. Um, parents are frustrated. There's no, and it sounds like I said, teachers are frustrated too. So it's just, when are you guys gonna quit making excuses and start doing something about it? Is, because every time somebody, something in these meetings, you guys just give excuses. And that's not gonna work anymore because it's been half a year. And your district is already the lowest in the state and the lowest in this area and you seem to not care.
Thank you.
That's all I had to say, and that's what I voiced to her. And she told me to tell you guys, so.
Thank you so much for calling.
I hope you guys really quit making excuses and actually look at how much you're hurting the students as well as the extra work for the teachers and the parents. So that's all.
You're done?
Have a good holiday.
Are you done? Thank you.
This is my identity.
Public comment there. Um, as a district, I mean, we're living in a pandemic, the entire world is, and people have to understand that. Uh, we don't make excuses at this board table. Um, we are, I mean, we're living through this just like you. We have board members that send their kids to this district every day just like you. We love this district. We have eight thousand employees that show up to work every day wanting to help our kids, uh, and making sure they succeed. Do we care about their health? You bet your butt we do. So we want to make sure that their health is the number one priority because an unhealthy child, a child that's sick can't come to school anyway. So we want to make sure that everyone is having that ability to participate, but I do understand we do need more growth. Um, so look forward to next semester. I believe our next agenda item is the consent agenda. There were a couple of items that were pulled off the agenda. I believe the OSERS report was pulled and I believe the contract for the, uh, SROs has been pulled as well. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is here before us.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perman. Any abstentions? Hearing none, Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Give me one second. Ms. Gotti?
Hi.
Holman?
Hi.
Crackey?
Hi.
Perman?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Snow?
Hi.
Cassidy?
Hi.
Ada.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ray, and thank you, colleagues, for voting for that. One second. That's so many different papers. All right, so moving on to our action items is I one A. This is the OSERS report, and I believe this was pulled by Mrs. Gotti. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, as, as you said, Mr. Snow, the retirement system has been very, um, near and dear to my heart. Uh, the entire time I've been on this board, I think the first piece of legislation that, um, I was able to help introduce in two thousand fourteen dealt with OSERS. So I just wanted to point out, because I get calls from retirees who are very concerned about the overall retirement system. Just wanted to point out on page three, the positives and then the obvious um, challenges that are still out there for, uh, the retirement system. This year, there were a total additions of two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty million, which is significant, but you also, um, see that because of the decrease in, um, or the increase in, uh, folks who have taken money out, the actual net was a hundred and eighteen million. And that comes even after the district put in another twenty-one million. Our, our current employees put in thirty-five million. We put in thirty-five. The state put in about nine million. So what I really want to emphasize that this board think about very much is retirement benefit payouts increased by six million dollars this last year. And more than likely, as boomers start to retire and additional people leave the workforce, that will continue to grow. When I look at the total contributions on page seven, I see contributions of a hundred and one million, which is, um, impressive. But I also receive retirement benefits and refunds paid out of a hundred and thirty-six million. And the hundred and one million includes that extra twenty-one million that we paid in. So I just want to be very, um, I want to make sure that you all are thinking about that. The inactives have reached almost seven thousand employees who are, um, receiving benefits, and that's a significant number compared to seventy, close to seventy-four hundred that are paying into the system. So, um, that's reflected as well as what we talked about at the last board meeting, which is those limited partnerships which continue to carry some level of risk. Um, on page thirteen, you can see that that's the two hundred and ninety-seven million with page fourteen shows unfunded commitments yet to go to those alternatives of almost forty-five million. So I would just, um, encourage everyone to be mindful of that. The net position to net pension liability did improve to fifty-nine point fifty-five percent from where it had been, um, so almost a two percent increase. But that still falls way short of the eighty percent. Um, and that doesn't take into account a potential, um, rate of return of seven percent versus seven and a half percent as reflected on page seventeen. So I will continue to, um, advocate for the retirees and encourage this board to, um, use additional resources that you can to fund the retirement system above and beyond what the actuarial number is so that that system is well-funded, recognizing, I think most importantly, that the state system will be, um, close to, um, full funding mu- much sooner than our system will. And when that happens, the potential of lower, um, contributions from employees in the rest of the state will be a challenge for hiring in OPS. So, um, I would continue to encourage all of you to be very mindful of that and to utilize, um, resources in a way that benefits the retirees and our current employees. So that's all I have for that and I'm, um, I guess the one other comment I would make is in the KIOS report and in the ESU report. You'll also see in both of those reports an allocation for the unfunded liability. I think one was slightly over a million and the other one was closer to fifteen million. So, um, it, it's a drag on all of our financial statements across the district. So I would encourage, um, the board and administration to work toward that, um, funding of eighty percent, um, in as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Gotti. Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Um, I've entertained a motion to approve this item that is here before us.
So moved.
There's a motion by Miss Gotti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Sorry about that. Any other discussion? Hearing on Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Holman?
Hi.
Crackey?
Hi.
Perman?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Snow?
Hi.
Cassidy?
Hi.
Gotti?
Hi. Ada.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item I one B, I believe this is the, um, associate SRO contract, which I believe is in our middle schools. It was pulled by Mr. Roman. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, kind of point out a few things that I saw in the proposed contract and um, see if I can get any clarification on it. Um, and I forwarded everyone a while ago, uh, the questions I asked and the answers I got. And, um, I mean, I have to be honest, it, that, it doesn't really answer the questions. And so since this is my last board meeting, I just wanted to maybe point out these things. So maybe moving forward, like, we can get answers to these because I know the SRO issue and contracts are important to a lot of people on the board, important to a lot of people in the community. Um, so I, I mean, just from a big picture standpoint, I'd probably would have been not a bad idea to have this not on consent. Um, so we could maybe have a conversation that, and this, it's been an ongoing conversation. I know, Mr. Snow, you and Mr. Wayne in two thousand and fourteen really kind of brought this to the forefront. And that's where I think a lot of these contractual provisions. And that's where I think a lot of these contractual provisions originated from. So I'll just dive right in. If you look at 8.2, says the school district will adopt prior to January 1st, 2000, or yeah, 2021, policies that address under what circumstances a student will be advised of their constitutional rights before being questioned by an SRO. And that hasn't happened. And this provision, I'm fairly certain, was in last year's contract as well. I don't, I don't think we would have just plopped something in and given us two weeks to get it done. We've had a year at least to get that done, and it, it hasn't, hasn't been done. You know, the answer, as you can see in the email I sent around, was that the current stu, student code of conduct tells families and students when law enforcement may or will be contacted. And then the law enforcement follows when their Miranda process, follows their Miranda process after notification. And actually, I agree with that. I think, I think the provision 8.2 shouldn't be in there. School districts are in no position at all to tell police when Miranda rights, because that's, that's what we're talking about here. School districts can't write a policy and tell police or detectives when police or detectives need to give Miranda rights. And that doesn't make any sense. It's a hard enough issue for police and detectives to figure out on the close cases anyway. And a policy can't override that. Miranda rights are given when there's an in custody interrogation. In fact, the, the number one case in Nebraska about that is, is from a central high interrogation that took place in the principal's office with the door cracked a little bit. So that's all spelled out in case law, and there's nothing, so I, I don't know. I, I mean, maybe in a little bit, I'll make a motion to strike 8.2 from that. I don't know, but it, we, there's no way we're going to get that done in two weeks. So that's a problem. Look at 8.3, it says OPS will adopt prior to January 1st, 2021, so in two weeks. A policy that addresses when a parent will be notified or present if a student is subjected to questioning or interrogation by a school official. Now, the answer I got to that, I mean, it's fair, you know, that's kind of, that's a, that's one of the more difficult things is, is notifying parents. Because sadly, a lot of times it is a, a parent who's the, the suspect in the case, and a child is a victim. So, but I don't think a policy's ever been written, and this contract requires that a policy be written to tell. So maybe that's, that, that's a closer one. I, I think maybe our existing policies may cover that, but I don't, I don't, I don't know. The third one is 9.3, and that's, that's probably my, my, my biggest issue with this proposed contract here. It says the city shall, within two weeks, identify a student and parent complaint process to express a concern or file a complaint about a school resource officer. And the answer I got is when someone complains about an SRO, they're told to call internal affairs. I mean, I guess, I mean, but that's not, that's, that's not what 9.3 calls for. And so OPS has, actually, not OPS, the city has two weeks to get that done. And I don't know who the conduit is. I think I might know who it is, but that needs to be in writing. Student, I mean, that's, that's a big one there, a, a student and parent complaint process. And again, tell them to, you know, call internal affairs is, is not a complaint process, procedure. As far as I can tell, it's, that's adequate to meet those contractual obligations. So other than that, you know, I did, I, if you look at the attachment, I do think it's striking the number of arrests that have taken place last year. I know it was a shortened year and school being shut down and, and in the spring. But I saw in 2014, it was reported in the Omaha World-Herald that there was over 800 arrests in 2014 school year. And last year, there was somewhere in the order of less than 300, I believe. But on that too, I would, I would encourage whoever puts together this chart, that there's some, uh, there's some misnomers in, in the verbiage, you know, because if you see, if you look in row, I'm sorry, column, let's get that mixed up. If you look in column A, it talks about arrests. And then the biggest row in that column is street release. Well, a street release isn't a rest, it's a ticket. So I don't know if we're talking about these juvenile referrals that, I, I know that, that whole law changed about three or four years ago. Or if we're actually talking about tickets. Because I know OPS, I believe, has a policy that no arrests will be made for students under 18, which also is a little unusual because that means 18 and 19 year olds could get arrested. And so I don't know if that's what the district means to say, or if that's what the board wants to say, but it seems kind of arbitrary. But, so those are my thoughts on that. I guess, I don't know if anyone listening from the staff or Dr. Logan or any board member who's been dealing with this for six years knows why we have three contractual obligations that we are about to vote yes on that need to be done in two weeks. I don't know if that was just an oversight or if we're actually going to get that done in two weeks. Actually, I know that's a rhetorical question. It's not going to get done in two weeks. And so I guess I'm just looking for some help on that.
Thank you, Mr. Perman. Megan or Dr. Logan, who, who was the primary person dealing with the contract?
That would defer to council and, and then we can talk from there.
Sounds good.
So the law that was passed, I think it was April of 2019, required a number of provisions. It's LB 390, Mr. Perman. And it required a number of new statutory provisions which are included in this. And so it, it all, you know, it, it is, a lot of these provisions are part of LB 390 and are, are part of why having that included, yes, that law was to go into fact, you know, it, here shortly. And they, they need every MOU to have these provisions in by January 2021. So that was part of the reason why those provisions were included. And that pretty much is, you know, it, it's because of the new law.
Well, that was for memorandums of understanding, but this contract seems to, well, require policies within the next two weeks. Have we, do we have those in writing?
So I, I believe we are meeting our legal obligations with the student code of conduct. We do have, the student code of conduct is a policy, so we do have the policies with regard to that in writing. And so I, I think it is, it is largely statutory changes that were made. And then these are ma, these changes are made because of statutory reasons to the contract.
I can tell you, OPS does not have a policy in place that spells out when Miranda rights should be given as, as this contract requires under 8.2.
I, I, you know, and I understand, you know, specifically, you're looking for Miranda rights as part of the student code. Certainly understand, you know, what you're saying with regard to that. It does provide that if we need to call law enforcement, that we do. And so it is more nuanced, more general in the student code of conduct. So I certainly appreciate your point, Mr. Perman, on that. But it, it is, it is part of the, included as part of the student code of conduct.
What, what part of the student conduct spells out when Miranda rights should be given?
And you'll have to ask somebody that's more specific to that.
I, I know the student code of conduct, it does not do that. So I mean, that was kind of, again, sorry, it was kind of rhetorical question. Nowhere in the student code of conduct does it say when an SRO should give Miranda warnings. And that, and that is required under this contract. I guess I, I was just reading that, that law now. If, if that's a requirement of law, we need to whip together policy right quick to comply with the law. But if it's just this contractual obligation, then I guess, oh, I don't know.
Mrs. Neelis Brash, is that an, is that a contract or is it, is it actually written in statute?
I, I believe we are meeting our legal obligations. It is both statutory and written in the contract, Mr. Perman and Mr. Snow.
Yeah, I just, I just saw it in the, um, in the, it's subsection five in that, in that statute. And, and again, it doesn't look like OPS has met that obligation. It, 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 just by having, in, in the, in the code of conduct, what it, what it has is policies of when a parent or guardian will be notified. What it does not have is directions on when a Miranda warning shall be given. It just doesn't. I mean, we can go circular on this all night, but it doesn't.
Would it, would it, obviously, you won't be on the board, but possibly have the district go ahead and write those policies for 8.2 and 8.3. Obviously, the agenda for next year is still worked on, but we could actually, people won't see that until it's published. But we could actually post it that we do have these two policies that we're going to, that were already written. And it's set for the first board meeting, I believe, June 6th, not June, January 6th. I'm all over the place today. So to see if the board would approve that, to add those two items into the code of conduct.
And that's, that's fine because it's real easy. I can tell you when, I can tell you when, I can tell you what the policy should say. Policy should say is when a police officer decides Miranda should be given, it shall be given. I mean, and I'm not trying to be cute about it, but the school district can't do anything else. You, I mean, you know how many, I mean, you know, all day, every day, as we speak, there are police officers deciding whether or not to give them Miranda rights. I mean, you, you, you could write volumes on, on this. So the law is a little silly, to be honest. It's totally impractical. So what the policy needs to say is when a police officer determines that Miranda rights shall be given, that's when it'll happen. Because like, I mean, it's a weird law. I know why it was written, but you know, you gotta comply with it. You can't, you can't pick and choose what laws you comply with.
Understand.
Well, I, I agree with what you're, I agree with some of what you're saying. I think that Mrs. Neelis Brash did a really good job of talking about the fact that this is nuanced. And I'm thinking about how this actually plays out in schools for school administrators and how this happens. The importance of letting a parent know that this is about to occur or is occurring because sometimes it may happen very quickly in terms of the practical implication and implementation of this. I believe that the student code of conduct certainly covers what you are, you are stating. We certainly can act on the wishes of our board president on how you would like to proceed. We do believe that we have it covered in the code of student conduct. And to be honest, no matter how it is written, I think you are acknowledging that, Mr. Perman. No matter how it was written, there will be, there will always be a difference between how it is written and how it is implemented because of nuance and circumstance when we're dealing with our, our young people and in, in entanglement with law enforcement in a school setting. So, Mr. Snow, I think Mrs. Godding has her hand up if you want to call on her. But, Mr. Snow, please let us know how you would like to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan, and thank you, Ms. Neelis Brash. Mrs. Godding, the floor is yours.
Well, I'm just thinking of a couple of things. First of all, I'm thinking that the student code of conduct is what students sign off on when school starts in September or August, right? And so to make a change partway through the year on that would be almost administratively impossible to ensure, especially in the middle of a pandemic, that you had everybody sign off on it, that they actually got it and understood it. So I don't, I don't know that we've ever made in the history of the district, a change to the student code of conduct in the middle of a year. So I think that could be a huge challenge, right? The other, the other item I just want to reflect on is, so I, I can clearly remember back to some of those conversations in 2014. And even times when I have sat in hearings, et cetera, and heard from parents. So I guess, I thought when we redid the student code of conduct, we worked really hard to address some of those issues that we saw where parents didn't feel as though they were appropriately informed and that some of that wording had been cleaned up. But I guess I have to refer back to staff because I don't have the student code of conduct in front of me at this particular moment to know. And I guess that's what I'd appreciate hearing is where do we cover those, I, thinking that we have.
Mrs. Godding. Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Snow. My fault. No, we believe that we have covered it. We had another extensive conversation about this. I remember Dr. Annie McFarland being a part of a conversation about this, maybe a little over a year ago. We believe that we have them covered. I believe that the, in the code of conduct, I believe what Mr. Perman is referring to is our separate policies. Separate, even though the code of conduct is a policy by itself. I think he is, in, in my opinion, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Perman, more of the letter of what it says, that it will be separate policies. So do I have that wrong, Mr. Perman?
Well, I, I don't know right or wrong. I, I feel like we're, I, I don't know if this conversation is really tracking, and that's probably my fault. I, I think we have two separate things. I, I think we have a policy, and I know Ms. McFarland or Dr. McFarland did address the very difficult subject of when to notify a parent. Because most of us realize that a lot of these cases involve children who are victims. And you're not going to pick up the phone and call a parent and say, we're interviewing your child about the way you just abused them yesterday and the bruises that they have. Got it. That's not what I'm talking about tonight. That, that's one of the hardest decisions for teachers, administrator, everybody. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is this very specific law. And, and it's in the contract. It's 8.2, and it says that the district and, and the city, I, I can't, for some reason, pull it up in front of me. It says, here it is, "The district will adopt a policy which addresses under what circumstances a student will be advised of constitutional rights before being questioned." That's a, a separate and distinct conversation than when parents are notified. It, it just is. And, and it's, it's a, it's a horrible law. I'll just tell you. It's a bad law. I know why it was written. It's a, it's kind of a, I, I don't need to go there. It's a, it's a, it's a bad law. So it's an impossible, that's the thing, it's an impossible law. I mean, again, in the time that we've had this conversation, you probably have five police officers in Omaha metro area deciding whether or not they need to Mirandaize someone right now. So you cannot put that in a policy. So I, like, why lawmakers thought that they had to put this in a law, an impossible law, that the lawyers who wrote this law know it's an impossible law. But the fact is, it's a law, so we have to do something. We can't, we can't say another thing covers it when it doesn't. We have to have a policy. We have to have it by January 1st, 2021, or we're not going to be in compliance with the law. And we don't. And I don't know if I could be more clear about it, but we don't. So what the policy needs to say is when a police officer believes that they need to give a student a Miranda right, they shall give the student a Miranda right. It's, it sounds stupid, but that's all you can do.
Understand. I, I believe according to that statute, doesn't mean that the board has to approve it by them, but the district has to have one that could be being submitted to the board. I know Mrs. Godding talked about in the middle of the school year, but the board can vote on a policy and have it start for next school year. So I do understand that as well. I will direct the superintendent administration to draft up a policy on 8.2, if I'm correct, for you, Mr. Perman, to come back to the board in January for board approval. And most likely, I mean, you've written it already, so it's a one liner, so thank you for your insight on that.
Thank you. No worries. Appreciate it. Appreciate the conversation and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have no effort, oh, this item is up for approval. So I entertain a motion to approve I-1B.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ryan. Is there a second? There's a motion by Ms. Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
By Dr. Holman. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Is are we approving this item? With the stipulation that staff is writing a policy because I think. That's based on all the conversation that we just had. It seems like that ties to what this motion should say.
Yes, so they. It is added in there. So I will go back and reread that to say I would entertain a motion to approve. Item I one B with the notion that the staff will come back with a policy for the Board of Education before January first, two thousand twenty one. For the board to approve later.
And is that the only policy Mr. Pearlman was concerned about?
I think that was his biggest, the Miranda rights, eight point two.
Is that correct?
One moment, please. I I do believe that, thinking about it, I do think eight point three was addressed by Dr. McFarland. In a prior meeting. I. I I would, I guess I would be fine with, you know, with eight eight point four. Well, let me skip ahead to. Well, nine point three is out of OPS's control to a large degree. The cities. Y'all are going to have to hold the city to their end of their bargain on that one. But I think if I ask for a raise of hands, I think. I'd see some hands raised if I said, do you think? Call call internal affairs and complain to them is sufficient for a student and parent complaint process? If you think that's cool, I don't think that's cool. I don't think it's sufficient. I think most of you agree with me, but you know. You guys can work that out next year. I'm sure it'll be just fine.
Okay, so, Mr. Smith, okay.
Yeah.
Raise real quick. Is your hand still raised?
Yes. I just wanted to say that there is, and I don't know, maybe we can work out the communication part, but there's a citizens complaint review board. That we can send our parents to when they do have a complaint. It's already established. And working in that nonprofit business, I kind of know the connection to make that there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
We wouldn't have to create it.
Yes. Thank you, Ricky. That's a very good point. That's good work there. Yep.
Mrs. Ryan, Ms. Ryan, sorry.
I just point of clarification. Have we or do I need to re?
So I will have Mr. Smith pull his whoever seconded your motion and then have you pull your original motion.
Okay, then my comment is for a discussion after that.
Any other discussion right now? Okay, so I believe Mr. Smith made the second on that. Is that correct?
Yes, well, I'll pull my second.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan, would you pull your pull your motion, please?
Yes.
Thank you for pulling your motion, your first motion there. All right. So now we're back at it. I'm going to reread the item. With the district coming back. So I will entertain a motion to approve item I one B. With the notion that the district will draft. A policy regarding eight point two. Before the end of the year to bring back to the board at the January sixth meeting. For later discussion. I mean, it's at least that the district has that proposal. I so moved. Anybody? Go ahead.
Mr. Snow, so that we can so we can meet the expectation, I would suggest that we. We make the the second meeting of the in January because we have three new board members and. We could be sitting right back at the same trying to educate folks. So. My humble suggestion is that we look at it for the January eighteenth meeting.
Is that what meeting is that the nineteenth?
I think it's the eighteen.
It'd be the twenty first.
That's right. Now, the twenty first, sorry, because of the Martin Luther King holiday.
Makes sense. Okay, so I will entertain a motion. Let's scrap that one. I'll entertain a motion to approve item I one B. With the notion that the district, the administration will come back to the board. At the January twenty first meeting with policies regarding eight point two. In this contract. So if there's a difference.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All right, discussion. Ms. Ryan.
As everybody knows on the board and a lot of people who are probably watching, I am very much against. SROs in our schools and I think that a lot of this should be pointed towards mental health and giving students and teachers those resources that they need. So even though I. Motion to approve doesn't mean that I necessarily have to approve. So I will be as my last major vote on this board will be voting no on this. ASRO contract.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan, for explaining your position on that. Next speaker, Mrs. Gadding.
So this is this is for middle schools. Is that correct?
Correct, because they have the associate.
Right. So I just want to point out that having had three kids who went to middle schools and especially I think about. My last child who was in a middle school and the value that the SRO brought to. Something different than what maybe everyone might think about. He really brought structure to the environment. He was very, very well loved. The kids respected him, looked up to him a lot and. And he certainly taught them a lot about. If there was someone intruding the building, how they should behave. And I'll never forget those conversations when he would come home. And tell us about how his SRO taught them to be safe if someone was going to harm them. And so for that reason. I see SROs maybe a little bit differently than others might see them, but I have great respect for the individuals who serve. Across the district as SROs, having gotten to know them over the years, but I have a have a really. I have a real appreciation for those in the middle school environment who are. Dealing with middle school kids where that's a really that's a tough place to be sometimes and you're teaching them and. They're not little kids and they're not big kids yet either. So I'm very thankful for that and I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadding. Any other speakers? Mr. Pearlman.
Yes, just briefly. This was the this was the other reason I wanted to pull this off consent. There's actually two reasons I want to pull. One is that the technical parts of the. Of the problems with the contract, but the other is to point out that. Things like this probably shouldn't be on consent. And. I guess my my other big takeaway is is. You know, the this issue isn't going away. I mean, the whole SRO, policing the schools is not going away. In fact, the discussion will only increase over the next few years. So. What I haven't heard is dialogue. I haven't I haven't seen any invitation for police representatives to come and speak with board members. Or. Anything like that. And we're talking about such a big decision. I feel like. We should all be as informed as we can. You know, about about the role of student resource officers, what they do. Problems, what problems students are seeing, what problems parents are seeing. Teachers, administrators, and the police. What can be done better? You know, where exactly are the student resource officers? Are they in every middle school? Are they in all high schools? How many are in each of schools? Are there any in elementary schools? We can't make decisions like this. Well, you can't make decisions like this anymore because I'm not making these decisions anymore. But I strongly suggest that we stop making decisions like this. Because if I hadn't asked to pull this off the consent agenda, this would have been passed with a nine oh vote tonight without any discussion. And this is too big of a too big of a topic, too important a topic for us to not give it as proper consideration. And there's too many of these items coming in front of the board with no discussion, with people just voting their emotion and not having the facts. And it's not good and it's not right. And that's how a lot of the the terrible things that have happened in the district have happened. And so I would just encourage the the new board members and the ones who are staying on. To really examine with a fine tooth comb contracts like this, and you'll see things like this all the time. Where we have two weeks to come up with policies where things come in front of us like the student code of conduct where. When we have problems with it and we ask, what happens if we don't pass the student code of conduct? Then people throw their hands up and say, well, it's supposed to be at the printer in two weeks and there's nothing we can do about it. Or if four of us have a problem that the South Omaha High School looks like a prison and the new high school in West Omaha. Looks like a country club and we ask, what can be done about it? The answer is nothing. We can't do anything about it. They're already building it. So things just need to change, you know. Nothing more I can do about it, but I appreciate everyone's work. But things like SROs in the buildings are too important to be put on consent. And so hopefully. Next year, we will have a more robust discussion about such important things that affect our students.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. In two thousand fourteen, I had an opportunity to meet with Chief Smarter as well as the director of OPBD. At their office about the SRO contracts. The school I went to in middle school didn't have the best SRO, but in high school, I went to a high school near a military base and our SRO. SROs were the MPs, so they would always come and play football with us. So. It's a different relationship there than the SRO I had in middle school that was just showing up with, you know, pencils for us and didn't really provide that. But each school and every facility is different. A lot of our facilities in OPS have SROs that are amazing. And the interesting thing about the SRO I had in high school, he was a black individual that ended up being a wrestling coach as well. So. Everyone's affected by it differently. One of the things that. This district is not in the that we struggle with, and I've noticed is we have three contracts. We have one with OPD, one with Bellevue, and then one with the Sheriff's Department. Now, OPD is always willing to sign and work on how to better their relationships with OPS. The other departments are doing the same, but they do it on their own terms. So you'll never get a full contract right now. Unless we all got them to sign one contract that will make sure that whether you're at Bryan or Central, the SRO program will be a hundred percent the same. And right now we are not, we struggle with that because it's, what do we do? Not sign a contract? Then we don't have facilities that are protected and then parents start worrying what happens to my child if something happens at the school. I know this. I met with a group called What Youth Can Do over the summer and they had a lot of demands. And I believe Ms. Ryan met with them, I believe, once or a couple of times. They had a lot of demands, but the we talked about some things and the kids, the not the kids, the young adults at the time. They were all graduating and leaving the state of Nebraska. Obviously, there's a lot of things we can do when kids are back in school, but I think if we're going to do this and this is going to take. Before removing the Band-Aid of getting rid of SROs or whatever that idea is, we have to have something in place in place of that. And I think the administration has been focusing mostly because of the pandemic on getting kids in the schools, academics, and making sure our families are healthy. Has been the priority. And I've said that to anybody. And there's nobody on this board, nobody in this district that is. Anti a lot of things, especially SROs than myself. And I am voting for this because we need to make sure that before we get rid of something that we are ready to replace it with something better. So we're not sitting here eight years from now or ten years from now dealing with the same issue. And that main issue, when I started this in two thousand fourteen, we created a code of conduct, a student code of conduct group. And I was in those meetings every day trying to find a way how we can merge. Our high school code of conduct and our elementary code and making sure that our students and our families not just feel heard, but feel safe. And are actually safe at their schools. And we have a lot of examples and we don't have to go back through those examples there. But I think there's a lot of things that we can work with the legislature and other entities to make sure that we do have a robust SRO program. Working with OPD, they've always been helpful, but that challenge always comes is when you have. A lot of things in front of you as a district, and I'm just explaining myself. It's really hard to put more things in the fire when your biggest issue is making sure kids can get to school and that. The loss of learning is caught up and how do our teachers and our students and everyone is safe at work? With that, Mrs. Gadding, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One, I want to thank Chief Smarter back in, I think it was two thousand fourteen fifteen. He did come to a school board meeting and we did have the opportunity to ask questions. And I think that was very beneficial and I I guess I appreciate community leaders. In the past who have come and worked directly with the board to solve. Problems, and I think that that is something that needs to be really reiterated going forward. And then just to. Reflect back on what Mr. Pearlman was saying, this is an issue that deals with students. And someone very wise said to me back when I was board president that. If you time yourself during a school board meeting, you should be spending more time talking about your students than any other. Any other thing that you do. And so I would just encourage. Individuals, especially going forward, that items get put onto action and information to help you. You all become better board members because you can't become better board members if there's not a conversation at the table. And only when you get really robust conversation going and then you think of questions to ask. Do you truly understand the purpose of why you're there? And that's to serve the students that are in our district. So. I would encourage folks to put items on the agendas going forward that really help you to understand more. How we can help our students and to Mr. Snow's point, recover some of this academic loss that. As as our speaker today, who came to public comment, said, our kids are falling behind and parents are noticing. So I would encourage the board next year to really focus on those conversations and appreciate Mr. Pearlman bringing this one up.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadding. Any other questions, comments, hearing on Mr. Dr. Logan?
Mr. Snow, I was going back to my text messages with Chief Smarter because he and I have had some exchanges back. We've been we've had a busy. Few months. We had some exchanges about trying to arrange time to address some of these issues, but I've been a little bit distracted with some other things. So. This has been on the administration's mind for I am the daughter of a police officer, so let me just always say that. But this has been on our mind for some. For some time and to think of some creative ways that we can do some problem solving and to your point. To make sure that we have a plan for how we move forward and how we can collaboratively move forward. So. Rest assured, it's certainly been on the administration's mind. We have not had nearly the kinds of issues or arrests. Or those kinds of things because students have been in a three two model or virtual. But just just wanted to make sure that that has already something that has been in process with. Myself and Chief Smarter having discussions and certainly on the table as we move forward. I just saw the last text message was September twenty ninth. And in reference to that, we've had some other discussions here recently, but. In reference to this SRO issue.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Thank you for your work in being that community liaison between our police department as well as our city officials. I hear compliments about you all the time that you're very accessible and very honest with them. So hopefully we can get some some training and some more district input and working with our SROs there. I did get a text message because I knew he was watching. My stepdad texted me. He worked for the Eighth MP Brigade. So I don't know if he was a police officer. I don't think he was, but he did work in the military police. Shout out to that, man.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve this item that is here before. It's already here. Mr. Ray, roll call, please. Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Holman.
Aye.
Cracky. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cracky is not on. Pearlman.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Aye.
Seven aye. Motion carries. Thank you, colleagues, uh, for, uh, approving that. And, um, uh, it's always good, uh, to make sure that our students are safe and that we are building our relations and continue to build upon our relationships with other individuals and community groups. And I think we need Mr. Smith, uh, with his connections, uh, work he's been doing with, uh, our law enforcement and the county and the city. Um, Dr. Holman. For a closed session. I believe.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Mark McQueen, and legal counsel pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice.
Uh, there's a motion by Dr. Holman to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Ray, roll call please. Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Thank you, Ben, Amanda, and Luanne. Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Seven aye. Motion carries. Alright, we're going into closed session. Um, let me remind the board that the purpose of closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Mark McQueen, and legal counsel regarding pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect the board went into closed session at seven fifty-four, or seven fifty-five. And why we are.
Yes, yes, please close it out.
We're officially out of closed session everyone at 8:55. As your board president, meeting adjourned. Good night. Happy holidays.
Thank you. You too.
Happy holidays everyone. Have a good one.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye everybody. Take care.